Good evening. I will reconvene the Yakima State Council meeting for May 6, 2025. We'll have a roll call, please.
Bird?
Here.
Brown?
Here.
Byers?
Present.
DeCio?
Here.
Glenn?
Here.
Herrera?
Here.
Roy?
Here.
All right, thank you. Please rise and join me for the House of Lords. Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll now have interpreter services coming forward.
Good evening. Jorge Villasenor, Language Connection. Si alguien necesita de la ayuda del intérprete, tenemos los sistemas disponibles y estoy ahí para ayudar. Gracias.
Gracias, thank you. Next is public comment, and we will allow for 35 minutes of public comment this evening. Each person who participates will have two and a half minutes. If you wish to make a public comment to council, you can pick up a form in the lobby and turn into city clerk. As you come to the microphone, please give us your name and tell us the city in which you reside. The first is Patricia Hernandez.
Hello. Good everyone. My name is Patricia Hernandez, and I live here in Yakima, Washington, born and raised here. And I am here because I'm advocating for my son, Angel Anthony Hernandez. He was taken to Oregon. I have not received any answers. He was in a domestic relationship. She's very abusive. This girl is abusive. She was very abusive to him. I had called 911. Nothing was ever done. Before the incident, he died in my arms. From cardiac arrest, he went into cardiac arrest from blunt head trauma. His head, like the twisted and jigsawed heart, was torn. He was murdered. I believe he was murdered. I have evidence. But I've tried, I've called numerous times, and I got arrested because I went to pick up his phone. I have evidence right here. My phone. She murdered my son. And nobody's doing anything. I want to be heard. He deserves justice. He died in my arms. My family, my family tell me, let it go. I can't. I cannot let it go. He was my son. I have the scars in my stomach. He died in my arms. I just need help. I don't have no money no more. I just lost my house because I conducted my own investigation on my own. The police officers, I believe I was discriminated against because she was white and we're Hispanic in Oregon. Nobody does anything here. I've gone, I've done everything. I don't know what else to do. I learned about this meeting today. I want answers. They never gave me no answers. Medical examiner put down that he did have a defensive wound, by the way. They said he was slightly swollen. His hand was not slightly swollen. That's a defensive wound. I have evidence. She murdered my son. And I just needed somebody to just look into the case. I got arrested for going to pick up the phone that she stole from the crime scene because they didn't investigate. I got arrested. Three counts, threat to kill charges, and I got arrested. I didn't do anything.
Mr. Hernandez, I'm sorry, but your time is up. Let me please extend my condolences to you for the loss of your son.
Thank you so much. I just wanted to be heard. Thank you. God bless.
Thank you.
Next is Tony Sandoval.
Tony Sandoval, City of Yakima. Okay, that's one. That's two. So the first one, on more than one occasion, I would wake up to that. This right here, every other day. That's why you guys need not to touch the police budget, period. It's going to get worse. I think I spoke in a previous meeting about our situation. I'm not on the southeast, northeast side. I'm over by the college. This is by the college. So I would highly suggest you guys do not touch the police budget. There's stuff that they're doing that this committee does not know. And like I said before, I've worked with the police department on some issues. I would get a meeting with the police department, the chief, let them debrief you. There's all the above. That's just one incident here. I didn't plan that. I mean, I just, it just happened. I mean, wow. But that's happening, all of that, domestic violence, drug dealing, tweakers, prostitution, all of that. And that's just in my area, and it goes in other areas. And guess what? It's from 16th Avenue East, from north to south, and it's going to jump the line. It's starting to jump the line to 16th Avenue for the folks that don't know those two sounds of guns and ambulance. So we better get the community together to resolve this, and please do not cut the police budget because we'll be beat.
Thank you, Mr. Sandoval. The next is Ron Torres.
Good evening. I'm Ron Torres, Yakima Council. How are you doing tonight? Tonight, we continue to look at who put into effect without a vote of the people HB 1110, removing local control over zoning and planning in Washington State, violating the rights of existing property owners and consolidating state control over your land. One of my first questions was why weren't the ADU accessory dwelling unit laws, HB 1056, passed in 1993, and HB 1337 in 2023 enough? Why wasn't it enough to allow owners of single-family homes to add one or two ADUs to their property? It's estimated that a total of about 1.7 million residential properties in the state are single-family homes. If even a conservative 10% of those added one ADU and two are allowed, it would produce nearly 170,000 extra smaller, more affordable homes and have less, far less, long-term impact on existing zoning, infrastructure, and single-family neighborhoods. It seems this would solve a chunk of the housing crisis for the elderly wanting to age in place, for young adults who were working on their education or not quite ready to buy their first home, or to add a rental income stream for the main property owner while meeting the needs for more affordable rentals. But obviously, it will not meet the needs of the earlier stated 1.1 million undocumented immigrants in Washington State that have increased the demand for affordable housing to the max. As stated earlier, when I first started this research, I thought the large, powerful packs were the powers behind HB 1011, 1110, excuse me. But as I researched, I found that they were possibly just, as named by me, suckerfish, attached to a much larger and much more powerful force that we named the whale last time. Whales are the largest mammal on earth, and to survive, they consume immense amounts of smaller fish and food constantly.
Mr. Torres? No, I'm sorry, but--
That's it. Okay.
Thank you very much. Next is Shelley White.
Good evening. I'm Shelley White, appearing tonight again as a private Yakima citizen, not a member of the Planning Commission. So could it be that the ADU laws weren't fast enough or lucrative enough for the powerful and influential packs that we talked about last time, bankers, realtors, home builders, et cetera, and their more powerful whale? The problem with the ADU laws was that they left zoning untouched. If you want fast and you want lucrative, you need multifamily zoning that allows massive amounts of rental units and hence massive income. Generally, multifamily properties, duplexes, triplexes, apartment buildings, are considered the most profitable rental type. They offer higher cash flow potential due to multiple units generating income and usually have lower building costs per unit compared to single-family homes. Nearly half, 47.1%, of all rental households in the U.S. are living in multifamily properties, making them the predominant rental type. They are by far the fastest growth of all types of rental housing and actually the fastest growing segment of all real estate in general, exceeding even commercial by 20%. So who or what is the whale? If you did your reading from the Department of Commerce fact sheet telling the city planning departments how to further subdivide a single-family parcel, normally containing one home, into parts containing four homes, you will have noticed a very telling statement under the section "Timing." Quote, "For example, the owner of an existing detached single-family residence could use a unit lot subdivision to sell their backyard to a developer who then builds." I believe in reality, the state expects very few individual homeowners to split up their yards and put a triplex on it. For a huge percentage of Americans, their home is their primary and their only nest egg. They don't have the cash or the credit to get a construction loan to build a triplex in their backyard, even if the current laws allow it. But if someone offers them cash for their yards, they may have many reasons to sell. And according to this quote from Commerce, developers will be the builders of most of the affordable multifamily housing being built under the new laws. I've attached a couple articles for you to read tonight, and I hope you do, ones from the Seattle Times from the end of March, about even the liberal members of the Seattle City Council having a problem with the new laws. And the second one is an ad that just came out to the real estate agents talking about how to get on board with this, and so I just feel like the locusts are being unleashed. So to end tonight, who are the developers, or more importantly, who owns the developers?
Ms. White, I'm sorry, but your time is up.
I had this one thing. The whale, institutional investors, and Wall Street next time.
Thank you very much. Mr. Beeler, is there anyone on line who wishes to address the council this evening?
No, Mayor Byers, there is not.
Thank you. Then we will end the public comment portion of the meeting and move on to open discussion for the good of the order. And item 5A is an introduction of our Director of Finance and Budget, Craig Warren, by City Manager Vicki Baker.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm going to call up our brand-new Budget and Finance Director Craig Warner to the podium, please. I want to just share a little bit about him for the audience. I know he's a very familiar name in Yakima County, as he was the Yakima County's Financial Services and Budget Director for many years. You'll have to remind me how many years.
Thirty-seven.
Thirty-seven. He retired in January from Yakima County, and fortunately, I think he was bored and wanted a challenge, so--
We're a challenge.
And so here he is. Started Wednesday, April 16th, so he's been here about three weeks. He's been in charge of Yakima County's budget process for many years, including times when they had complex issues too. So we're very fortunate to have him here to help us with our $9 million issue that we're working on here at the city. So in three weeks, he hit the ground running, and he's been filling up his whiteboard with all kinds of ideas that I've seen. I'm glad for that. He's a Yakima native, so went to West Valley High School, YBC, and Central. And I've asked him to say a few words, and I sprung that on him just a little bit ago. So I'm just glad you're here. Welcome.
Thank you. As Vicki said, I, since I was seven, when I transplanted from Reno, Nevada, with my family moving to Yakima, and we'd never seen this much grass in our entire lives, that's what got us to Yakima, and I never wanted to leave. The farthest I ever got away was to go up to Central for two years to get my accounting degree. And the bad part is, is when you, your last quarter in college, and you've got taxes, the last class you've got to do, and you hate it. And all of a sudden, what are you going to do when you are, when you don't like tax? And, you know, what do you do? You were going to be a CPA. So it was like, well, what am I going to, you know? I looked at it, and I decided that I applied for a job at the county, and I got the job, and I never left. And luckily, you know, government deals with taxes, but not, not personal taxes, which is the part that I didn't like. So in the end, I'm glad to be here, and I do believe I have something to offer. I do know a lot about the community and a lot about, you know, Washington State law. Counties and cities are different, so I feel like I'm drinking through a fire hose right now, but I appreciate the opportunity that Vicki has given me, and I hope I don't let you down.
You won't.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, thank you.
I'm going to shake your hand, at least. Good to meet you.
Don't skip me already, but then we know--
I won't.
Welcome aboard.
See you soon, right up there.
All right. Item 5B is the Council Nominating Committee Recommendations regarding appointments to boards, commissions, and committees. And Councilman Danny Herrera is going to give us a report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Myself and Councilmember Leo Rory met last week to renew some members for some committees, some vacant ones, and some people actually renewed, so there was no need for interviews. So I'll just go ahead and read them. We can make a motion at the end. So as the Capitol Theater representative, we appointed Arisha Cosby to the Arts Commission, and then the representative for the Larson Gallery, Gary O'Ham, to the Arts Commission. And then as the community representatives, Sylvia Mersal and Jacob Butler, as well, to the Arts Commission. And then we also have a youth position that got filled by Kenneth Watt to the Parks and Recs Commission. And then the last one was Eliza Mansia to the Housing Authority.
Thank you.
I move to adopt the Council nominating committee recommendations.
I'll second.
So we have a motion by Councilwoman DeCio and a second by Deputy Mayor Brown to adopt the recommendations of the nominating committee. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seven, zero. The motion passes. Thank you, Council. Item six is council reports, and I have not received any, so I think we're moving on. Item seven is the Consent Agenda, and all the items are considered by the City Council will be enacted by one motion without discussion. A council member may request to remove an item from the consent agenda, and if approved, it will be placed on the regular agenda for discussion and consideration. Does any councilman or councilwoman wish to pull an item off the consent agenda? Hearing that, then, Clark, would you read the agenda, please?
Item 7A is approval of amendments from the April 15, 2025 City Council Regular Meeting and April 22, 2025 City Council Study Session. Item B is a 2025 First Quarter Financial Report. Item C is a resolution setting the time and place for a hearing on June 3, 2025, to review and adopt the amended Six-Year Transportation Improvement Program and amend the Capitol Facilities Element of the Yakima Urban Area Comprehensive Plan for the period of 2025 through 2030. Item D is a resolution accepting and approving the First Quarter 2025 Claim Report for the City of Yakima. Item E is a resolution approving amendments to bylaws of the Yakima Planning Commission. Item F is a resolution authorizing a contract amendment with InfoSend Inc. for bulk printing and mailing services for utility services. Item G is a resolution authorizing an agreement with Ascent Foundation &amp; Moore LLC for the construction of the expanding water and wastewater access to unserved communities, Project AC 2570 and SC 2605. Item H is a resolution authorizing the sole-source purchase of digester mixer motors and gearboxes and from Whitney Equipment Company, Inc. for the City of Yakima Wastewater Division. Item I is a resolution authorizing an agreement with Coolbert Construction, Inc. for the South 72nd Avenue and Washington Roundabout Improvements Project 2517. Item J is a resolution authorizing agreement with Grand Baba Architects for Capitol Theater Capital Improvements 2025. Item K is a resolution authorizing the execution of an agreement with JUB Engineers, Inc., to provide construction administration services for Phase 1A upgrades in the terminal building at the Yakima Air Terminal McAllister Field. Item L is a resolution authorizing a memorandum of understanding with the Seattle Police Department to receive reimbursement funding for the continued use of forensic cellphone tools. Item M is a resolution authorizing a facility use agreement between Quiditas County and the City of Yakima for use of real property commonly known as Bowers Field for police vehicle training. Item N is a resolution authorizing the City Manager to execute a dispatch communication services contract between the City of Yakima and the City of Tappanish Police Department.
Madam Mayor, I move to approve the Consent Agenda.
A second.
So we have a motion by Deputy Mayor Brown and a second by Councilwoman DeCio to approve the Consent Agenda as read. We'll need a roll call vote, please.
Bird?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Byers?
Yes.
DeCio?
Yes.
Glenn?
Yes.
Herrera?
Yes.
Roy?
Yes.
All right, that's a seven, zero vote, and it has passed. The resolutions are adopted. Thank you. Not quite six.
Nine.
We are going to move down to--
Nine, eight.
Item 9A, which is, may I ask you, department items. We'll start with the Citizen Budget Advisory Committee Final Budget Report. We'll start with Mike Bailey, who has been our Director of that group and our interim financial director.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. It's been my pleasure to work with the committee, and I think Craig and I think Gary's going to join us as well. And I would make one slight, I guess, modification to the council agenda item. You'll see in the presentation that I'm characterizing this as a progress report. The committee will continue to meet, and we'll talk more about that in just a minute. But with, with that, I'd be glad to get us started, and I know you have to step aside to a public hearing at 6 o'clock, so maybe we'll start with the first couple of points about kind of the formation of the committee and the makeup of the committee. So the committee, Citizens Budget Committee here at the City of Yakima, was created by a resolution last December. And as I said just a moment ago, the committee's work is going to continue at least for a few more weeks, and as they work to come to more of a consensus around specific recommendations for the council to consider. I'll be providing you tonight a report from me about the work of the committee up to this point. And this presentation I'm going to walk through this evening is going to follow the outline of that report, so essentially be walking through the report with you by virtue of an outline. And we're here to answer any questions, have any dialogue around these points that the council would like as we go along. So therefore, the outline of my comments are listed for you here on the slide as well. We'll be going through that. As I said, the committee was created last December by this council via a resolution. And it was in that resolution that the council asked the committee to use the city's priority-based budgeting approach to learn about the city's budget, city budgets in general, in terms of what the rules, do's and don'ts and whatnot are, what are the options the cities have in terms of managing their fiscal affairs, and as a result of that learning, provide any advice and recommendations back to the council that the committee felt would be helpful to create a sustainable financial future for the city. So I'm going to make some comments, and we've advised the committee members that they're certainly at liberty to share their comments as well, and we'll make some time for that later this evening, with your permission. The committee was appointed, each committee member, there were seven appointed by each member of the City Council, and here are those seven committee members and the council member that was appointing them. I will say that the, that the committee attendance was impressive. The report will identify how many meetings we had, how many hours, 16-plus hours we spent in meetings. Most committee members were able to attend most meetings, some attended all the meetings. And those that didn't, weren't able to attend the meeting, checked back in with me to follow up about what happened in the meeting and to stay current so they could continue to contribute to the, to the outcome. So I appreciated their enthusiasm, their passion for the city, and their dedication to getting this work done for you. And with that, that might be a great place to stop, Mayor, if that's permissible for you. Otherwise, we'll be digging into kind of what the committee did and whatnot, and that might be where we'd want to, maybe a logical break.
I think that's probably permissible. It's 5:55. We can only start the discussion. Sarah, would that be all right?
Public hearing should start at 6:00, so if there's a staff report beforehand, I think that that's fine.
Okay. Let me find one.
Mr. Martin probably has a staff report prior to the public hearing opening, so--
Okay.
Here he comes.
Here he comes, Mr. Martin.
Started, perfect. Good evening.
Yeah, five minutes.
Might as well.
Okay.
Be long-winded.
Be long-winded. Okay. Let's see here. All right. Good evening, City Council. My name is Trevor Martin, Planning Manager with this, here with the City of Yakima. So tonight, I have before you some work that the Planning Commission has been, has been, has spent some really good time diving into, and it primarily has to do with Title 15, 1502, our definitions chapter, and 1504, our Table of Permitted Land Uses. So the Planning Commission, we spent, oh, probably two meetings diving, two or three meetings diving through the Table of Permitted Land Uses, really going through each item with a fine-tooth comb and looking at the zoning district, what the type of uses in the zoning district, and really the impacts on the surrounding neighbors. So, yeah, Table 4-1, so essentially what the Table of Permitted Land Uses does, so that is, that's our large table, that if you go to that in our municipal code 4-1, you can go through each zoning district, and it'll have a number in a, in a matrix that is a 1, 2, or a 3. That 1, 2, or 3 talks about the level of land use criteria that's supposed to take place. So a level one, or a Type 1 land use review is administrative review that's processed by staff upstairs. There's no notice period or anything like that. A Type 2 is, again, processed by staff administratively, but there's a notice period tied to that, a 14-day notice period. And then a Type 3 is oftentimes what's referred to as a conditional use permit. That, that is, that requires a public notice and a public hearing with a hearing examiner, maybe sometimes the Planning Commission. So we went through that table and took a look at, you know, some of the actions that the state has been working on, some of the things that the, the council, I've heard from the council, which, what the council has expressed, and then some of the, some of the trends that we have been seeing upstairs in, in planning, and gone through this table and reflected that. I may have misspoke to you yesterday about, I know that we were working on a, the Home Occupation, yes, table as well, and that went to the Planning Commission in February, and per Commerce, there's a 65-day noticing window, so that will be, that specific one will be in front of council sometime in June, June, maybe early July. Yeah, so that's, so I did misspeak on that one when I ran into you the other day.
There was some things in there with--
Yeah, yes. So that's in the other one, and I'll talk a little bit more about that one specifically. So, and then, as we go through the table, we went through that, and then we also went through 1511020, which are our application requirements. So we spent some time going upstairs, and, you know, there's always been a few things that have kind of bugged me on our application. So between staff and the Planning Commission, we went through our application requirements, and we took a lot of, took out the things that we were able to do at administrative level, a lot of the redundancies in our applications, so we've cleaned those up quite a bit. We know that, we know, understand that council's really prioritized making, streamlining applications, and I really appreciate that. So that kind of gave, felt like it gave me the green light to kind of go ahead and clean up these applications a little bit as well. So in doing that, we also looked at the requirements for site plans. And it's not been really clear in our code for, as far as site plans go. There's always been some here, there, here and there, and some interpretation on it. So what we've done here with this is really kind of get rid of a lot of it and then manage it from a more of an administrative policy level, so that way, if we want to make changes, we can go through it as a, as the community-- that site plan review, and then have that be the list that we distribute to the public, which we've done. It's just waiting for, waiting for everything to kind of go through tonight, and we, you know, of course, can change things depending...
I think we're at six, though.
Yeah, six, okay, perfect, so that's...
We will now move into our public hearing for the evening. The first is eight. A, it's a public hearing ordinance to consider the Yakima Planning Commission's recommendation regarding text amendments to Title fifteen, Yakima Urban Area Zoning Ordinance. And so you've already talked to us about it, do you have anything further to add to that?
Not for this specific one, no. I've kind of explained everything to you. Oh, there's another part to this as well. So I would like to hand this out to you. As part of this, I was going to save this for the public hearing portion of it, I'm going to hand a copy out, or hand the packet out to you.
Thank you.
So this is another portion that we discussed, and so what I have before you tonight is the ordinance as recommended by the Planning Commission, is what I have before you tonight. There was a part two that we looked at as part of these text amendments, which is a change to Title fourteen point fifteen, which is our short subdivision procedure. This is another place where I thought that the, that could be cleaned up as far as noticing requirements go. The, the public noticing of a short plat is something we implement as, you implement as a city council. It's not something that's mandated to us by the state. So as another effort into streamlining applications, I, one of my recommendations, and this is me separate from the Planning Commission, but as a staff recommendation, would be to, you know, if the council so chooses, to bring back an additional ordinance amending this portion of Title fourteen to remove this additional fourteen-day process. And that's, that's what I have.
Thank you. Okay, so now the council is charged withholding a public hearing on the matter and deciding whether to approve, approve with conditions, or deny this request. Public testimony is limited to the text amendments of Yakima Municipal Code Title fifteen, Yakima Urban Area Zoning Ordinance, chapters fifteen point two, fifteen point oh four, and fifteen point eleven. No other matters are before council. The following additional ground rules apply to this hearing. All council members participating remotely will have their cameras on during the public hearing. We don't see yet, Mr. Roy, so that the accurate record can be created if necessary. We will start with the presentation, we already had this presentation with city staff, and so we'll start with the hearing. The rules for public testimony are as follows, council. All speakers must speak into the microphone and give their full name and full address to the record. All comments should be addressed to the city council and should be relevant to the vacation. Please avoid repetitive comments if possible. If you're part of a group, please have one person speak as your group's representative. There's no unruly behavior, that's prohibited. As a reminder, presentations of any public comments shall be limited to the text amendments of the Yakima Municipal Code Title fifteen, Yakima Urban Area Zoning Ordinance, chapters fifteen oh two, fifteen oh four, and fifteen eleven. I will now open the public hearing. We don't have anybody assigned to speak at this point? Nope. So is there anyone from the audience who wishes to address the council about this matter? Mr. Sandoval?
I didn't read all what you're supposed to go by, but I just wanted to congratulate, congratulate Craig, and actually, he's, he started his career at the Auditor's Office when we used to have Jet Back here. And so he's a, he's a good one. You guys got a ringer.
Thank you. It doesn't really apply to the public hearing, but thank you for that encouragement. All right. Do we have anyone else in the audience who would like to address the issue of the public hearing? All right. Mr. Beeler, is there anyone online in Zoom who would like to give testimony?
No, Mayor Byers, there's none.
Thank you. If that's the case, I will close the public hearing and open it for council discussion. Any council discussion, any questions, Mr. Martin?
I like the idea of simplifying the process. As I've dealt with it over the years, I've found that it's a little bit cumbersome to deal with, and, and sometimes it doesn't make a lot of sense in my mind. So things that encourage Yakima to grow and encourage builders to build and do things, I like to see that happen.
Any other comments? All right.
I also, I also like this one as well. I don't know if we need a motion for this later or during this process, but, or if a consensus would do to bring it back, but...
Well, the council will make a motion to either approve or approve with conditions or not approve the recommendation of the department and the Planning Commission.
Right, I'm talking about the other aspect that he added, which is not part of this...
I think we have to come back later on that one.
It's, it's not part of the next one. It's, it was part of the original discussion with Planning Commission as part of this package, but it was removed at, after the Planning Commission discussion.
Okay.
What should we do, Sarah?
I think if we're bringing back additional changes with the home occupation, we can bring it back with that as one, one new proposal for you to amend this title.
So when it comes back, do both of them at the same time?
We can do that, or we can bring it back separately at the next available meeting that we can set a public hearing. So we need additional time to do that, so.
Okay.
It's up to the council.
I would like to...
Yeah.
I think, though, you should make a decision on the matter that's in front of you at the public hearing and close that decision off, do the second public hearing, and then talk about this, the Title fourteen changes.
So I move to approve the recommendation of the Yakima Planning Commission and pass the ordinance.
Second.
So we have a motion by Council on D C O and a second by Deputy Mayor Brown to approve what was presented by the Yakima Planning Commission, to adopt that, so.
Adopt the ordinance, yeah.
Yep. We will lead roll call vote in this place. If you read the ordinance first?
This is an ordinance amending Yakima Municipal Code Title fifteen, Yakima Urban Area Zoning Ordinance to incorporate text amendments recommended by the City of Yakima Planning Commission. Brown?
Yes.
Byers?
Yes.
D C O?
Yes.
Glenn?
Yes.
Herrera?
Yes.
Roy?
Yes.
Berg?
Yes.
All right, the vote is seven zero, motion passes, and the ordinance is passed. Thank you very much. Okay. Now we will move into item, I've lost my number already. Yeah, item eight B, which is a public hearing to consider the Planning Commission's recommendation regarding text amendments to Yakima Municipal Code Title fifteen. Okay?
Hello, once again. So tonight what I have before you is a, some, some other things that the Planning Commission has been working on, and these, these text changes more or less pertain to the downtown and some of the downtown design standards. It's, it's, it's things that have not been necessarily clear and outlined very well in our code, there's, there've been lots of gray areas. So the Planning Commission went through, they, they were spelling out what they were, what they wanted to see more specifically, specifically when it came to parking, to the downtown business district, and to mixed-use development. So we won't get into parking too much, but...
Please don't.
No, no, but it got more into, into the requirements and the location of it. So it's, it doesn't alter it, it's not, nothing, nothing groundbreaking or earth-shattering, it's just being more concise and more clear with what it is they'd like to see. And then the other thing that this section does address is the type one business review exemption. So that is something that I think is really, really great. So this is more or less for commercial uses in the city, so when we have a commercial site right now, and that commercial site, say, a business is done, or they move out, and then somebody else wants to move into that commercial site, oftentimes we require additional land uses even though the site's built out, nothing's changing, it's a lot of just kind of extra work. This stops that, this exempts that process. So they can basically go in with their tenant improvement stuff and start, start right away. So that's, that's one of the big things that's coming out of these changes, so.
Awesome.
So again, the council is charged withholding the public hearing on the matter and deciding whether to approve, approve with conditions, or deny the request. The testimony is limited to the text amendments in Yakima Municipal Code Title fifteen, all the chapters that were assigned to that. The following ground rules apply in this hearing. All council members participating routinely will have their cameras on during the public hearing, Mr. Roy, so that the accurate record can be created if necessary. I didn't see you on the last one, so please turn your camera. I didn't see that, okay, thank you. We've had our presentation from staff, so we'll now start the hearing. The rules for public testimony remain the same. I will open the public hearing. Does anyone in the room wish to make comment on the public hearing this evening? Seeing no one. Mr. Beeler, is there anyone on Zoom who wishes to address the council at this meeting?
No, Mayor Byers, there's none.
Thank you. In that case, we will close the public hearing, and we'll get there, we'll take a recommendation from council.
I would move to pass the ordinance as recommended by the Planning Commission.
My second.
So we have a motion, Deputy Mayor Brown, and a second by Council on D C O to pass the ordinance as presented by the Yakima Planning Commission. We'll take a roll call vote, please.
I'll read the ordinance.
Yes.
This is an ordinance amending Yakima Municipal Code Title fifteen, Yakima Urban Area Zoning Ordinance to incorporate text amendments recommended by the City of Yakima Planning Commission and adding a new section fifteen point zero nine point zero two six. Byers?
Yes.
D C O?
Yes.
Glenn?
Yes.
Herrera?
Yes.
Roy?
Yes.
Berg?
Yes.
Brown?
Yeah.
All right, thank you, council, seven zeros out, and so the motion passes and the ordinance is passed. Thank you. Okay, hang on to this. Council, we do have before us a question of when we would like to have a public hearing on this? Any ideas?
I just would like to bring it back.
Can we bring it back to the next meeting?
So we will need to set a public hearing for it, and the notice for that may not go out in time to set it for the next meeting, so we will set it for the next meeting that we can get the public notice and the amount of time necessary and get it in front of you for review, and that probably is going to be in June.
Okay.
I think it's, do you need a motion from us on anything, or just consensus?
We can agree to that?
If you just do consensus, that's fine. And it's just to put it on the agenda, so.
Do we have consensus, the council moved ahead as, as discussed? Okay, good. Sounds good. We will move on then, thank you. All right, we are coming back to our Citizen Budget Advisory Committee.
There we go, after brief, brief intermission. So as I suggested, now we're going to kind of dive into the content of the conversations that the committee has had. This just outlines the various meetings, kind of what topics were discussed when, and all of the various pieces that the committee went through. You can see on item eight, the meetings in April were largely devoted to discussing all of the things they'd heard and in determining at the end of the meeting last April, last Wednesday, that indeed they want to have more time to continue to discuss these items, so that's, that's the current state of affairs. So about those discussions, first of all, this was a passionate, energetic, and dedicated group of individuals that you've nominated to this committee, so it was my pleasure to work with them, and as a result, we had a variety of discussions and a variety of opinions on, on things. There were a few things that came up that there was a bit of frustration around because it just didn't, time just didn't permit us with the limited scope of the work to dig into some of these issues further. One was a concern about the future financial supports that's going to be required of the city with the Y M C A pool, understanding that issue better. A second one was essentially trying to follow the money. The city's fund structure, and I've made recommendations to both Craig and Vicky with respect to this, is overly complex in, in my experience, and as a result, money's moving around a fair amount, and it's difficult to figure out, well, what do general revenues support in the city? Because in addition to general fund programs, which was the initial scope, there are several other funds in the city where general revenues are being used to support those activities. And so trying to track all that down was just, time didn't permit. And so there were probably some things that, again, general funds, taxpayer dollars and things of that sort are supporting that weren't really able to be part of the discussion. They also quickly learned how complex the city's portfolio of programs is, and especially trying to use a priority-based budgeting approach to, to understand all those programs and, and what the program consists of, how, how it's working, and things of that sort, really caused some, I think, concern with respect to the committee's ability as a priority-based budgeting approach to stratify programs and identify sort of the most important and the lesser important and things of that sort. So while the, the progress report I'm providing to you will have a list of the stratified programs because the majority of the committee members did go through that exercise, I think there was some concern that maybe it isn't representative. If they had more time and understood, you know, what the programs consisted of better, of what maybe the outcome, the eventual outcome of that stratification might have been. They quickly learned that state law is pretty limiting in terms of what revenue options cities have, and, and that became, again, another source of some frustration, which I think we all share. As a result, they discussed, you know, what those options are. Of course, as you're familiar with, the voted property tax increase, we'll talk more about that in just a moment. Sales taxes are an option these days, especially with respect to the recently approved option of a one percent sales tax dedicated to public safety. That came up late in the discussion because it was just recently approved by the legislature. In fact, I presume it got signed by the governor, but, but if, if so, then it will become an available tool. Again, up to now didn't exist. One notion about the sales taxes was that with the city being the center of a lot of the economic activity in, in the region, that people who visit the city and therefore use city services help pay for those services by virtue of the sales tax, whereas they may not be property owners or renters and therefore paying property taxes either directly or indirectly. There was some concern that these issues are complex enough to try and educate the community as a whole in terms of what the best alternatives were, maybe it's better for the council to take the initiative as to, because of its level of expertise on these issues and do what it can, you know, without having to have a big community conversation. So, so that, that also came up. The, as I said, the, the committee spent time with department directors, and, and the department directors walked through and, and described their programs to the committee members. We did it over the course of three meetings. There's a hundred and thirty-four city programs, as you know, in the priority-based budgeting approach that the city took last fall. So that consumed those three meetings plus some. In fact, we started off meeting an hour on, in the evenings, that ended up not being enough. We moved it to ninety minutes, and we still never finished those meetings on time. But as a result, as I said before, those programs, the descriptions of programs kind of got truncated, and, and I think there were some, you know, again, concern that the committee members just didn't get enough time to spend with the departments to understand those programs correctly. One of the things we looked at was the level of staffing over time. And initially, it appeared as though the staffing had been relatively stable. We looked back ten years, and if you look at the budget books going back ten years, it shows stable staffing for ten years. We, we learned kind of late in the discussion that, in fact, that's not really accurate. In two thousand and twenty-two, and again in two thousand and twenty-three, positions were frozen or unfunded in the budget. They're shown in the budget as if they exist, but there's five police positions and three fire positions and three communications nine-one-one center positions that were unfunded in twenty-two and twenty-three. So essentially, budget cuts have been made in public safety during those years, even though the budgets don't make that clear. The, the committee talked about how it would be advantageous to understand the city's programs better and how they relate to the city's strategic goals. The strategic goals were a key part of the conversation. The committee continued to keep those in front of it as a, as a way to kind of evaluate the value of the programs and how they relate to those goals. However, the goals are pretty general, as you know, having been just developed last summer, and so the committee felt like, expanding on those goals, what do they mean? How do they build themselves out into operational components and thereby clarifying the connection between the city's programs and those goals? And then, how do those operational components perform? What is the information we have that talks about, well, which programs are performing well in contrast to what the goal's aspiring to accomplish, and which ones maybe either need more funding to be better able to serve in that capacity, or maybe it's money that's not really developing the kind of results that... or maybe it's money that's not really developing the kind of results that we're looking for? And that would be an opportunity to pare back that program and redirect those resources to something that's more effective. So building on those strategic goals so that they can be more important in the role of guiding city spending is one of the observations that occurred in this discussion. As I mentioned before, we discussed all the revenue options, property taxes in the various forms, whether it's a levy-lid lift vote, whether it's a formation of a parks district to help identify additional resources, dedicate them to a parks purpose, and enable that parks district in whatever form that can take, they can take a variety of forms to look after that responsibility. A fire authority, a regional fire approach, or something of that nature was also discussed. And of course, there's an EMS levy opportunity as well that's discussed in the progress report. The committee spent some time talking about the transportation benefit district, and while that would have a marginal impact on general revenues and general financial stability, it would help address some of the needs around sidewalks and some of the alleyways and roadways that were being discussed. Eliminating the CPI inflator that's in the city charter with effects to respective parks and streets funding was identified as an opportunity. Not only will it create additional resources available for the council's discretion to use in other places today, but as that, if inflator was the same place, the compounding effect would continue to further divert, you know, outside of council's control, money into those purposes. And so that's something that came up again in our discussion. Charging higher fees to nonresidents was one of the questions that came up and ideas, I think, that some committee members felt like made sense. Again, nonresidents not paying the property taxes and whatnot, that helps subsidize some of the city's programs. And then, while the city is a service provider in several respects, police, fire, IT services to our neighbors and neighboring communities, working to make sure we're recovering all the costs that are being expended in support of those neighbors, and maybe even beyond the costs for the convenience of providing those services, is an opportunity that should be looked at. Lastly, on this list, it was noted that there are those who can help support city programs better than others, and maybe an opportunity for either sponsorships or philanthropic approaches or whatnot should be considered as well. On the other side of the coin, cost cutting was, got a fair amount of discussion, and we've used the same $9 million figure that we've seen in the city survey and in other places as a kind of a point of reference. And in fact, two of the committee members did put together a way you could pare back the city's budget by the $9 million, just as an example. And again, that's included in the progress report at their request. So you'll get that information as well. Most did not take that approach. Like I said, two of the seven did put that together, part of their homework, and again, many committee members did homework. Growing our way into prosperity was certainly something everybody seemed to resonate around, although everyone recognized that that will take some time and potentially some investment, which is kind of, you know, seems counterintuitive, that in order to grow our way into prosperity is going to take some investment during these difficult financial times. The notion of a target-based approach, or what if we just identified how much money we want to spend in certain areas and entrusted, you know, that area with that amount of money and asked them to come back and tell us, how would, you know, how would they most effectively deliver services they're responsible for within that area? Again, known in the budget world as a target-based approach, was discussed and potentially could be done in concert with and complement the priority-based approach that the council has embraced as well. So something to think about. At the end of the day, as I said, the committee's work is ongoing, and they're continuing to hope to develop specific recommendations, a probably a combination of things, a combination of revenue enhancements, potentially places to pare back and whatnot, what I've heard referred to as a cocktail approach, because no one's approach is going to resolve an issue as complex as this. So that's, I think, where the current effort is headed. And it's more likely that this kind of thing will need to continue. I think the fact that the committee has been involved, to the extent they have, both in terms of the meetings you'll hear about in just a minute, and also through this committee's work, is really indicative of the kind of awareness that needs to be created for the community to understand. Either we've got to pay what it costs to enjoy all the things we enjoy that the city provides, or we're going to have to enjoy fewer things. And so I think that level of awareness is helpful. With your permission, I'd like to share a few of my closing thoughts. One thing is, I just want to sort of point out the obvious, you met Craig tonight. Vicky's been in place now for several months. Gary's on board. I think you have an excellent leadership team in place now, and I think that, you know, my work here is done. And it's been my pleasure to support them as they come on board and whatnot, but a stable leadership team is essential for the city to have long-term stability. And I think what we're seeing is the consequence of, you know, the fact that that hasn't been the case. And so between the passion for the city and experience with finances and awareness of how local governments work and things of that sort, you're in a really good place. They can't do that by themselves, however. And this is one of the things, my mantra is, I tell city managers, mayors around the state, you can't do this by yourself. You've got to have a strong leadership team with you. And that leadership team creates a culture. And because there has been some transition, the culture needs work, in my opinion. And so as they get more comfortable in their roles and call upon all of the leaders in the city to do their share as a part of the team, that will really, again, help lead to longer-term success in all these various respects we've talked about. I'll repeat a point I made earlier. It seems to me, in the past, decisions have been made that I would suspect are inconsistent with the council's preferences. My guess is you wouldn't want to cut your budget in this area of public safety, but that's essentially what happened in '22 and '23. And so being clear about what the plan is going to be and how it's going to be executed, where changes are going to need to be made, is something that are going to be important to retain the community's trust and help you get support from the community for the decisions you need to make going forward. At the end, it seems to me like you either need to raise revenues or decide which areas to cut. And so you're not unique, as I have said, I think, in previous conversations with you. In fact, I'll be leaving Yakima to go to Edmonds and work with them. I'm going to have the same conversation with them at a retreat on Friday. And so this is kind of the norm. I mean, prices, costs have gone up 25% over the last three or four years, and as you know, our revenues are much more constricted than that. In fact, I was just looking at your first quarter report, and you'll notice your sales taxes collections are not only below last year's, but they're below the year before as well. So people, as people begin to see what's happening in the economy to a larger extent and whatnot, these constraints are going to continue to need to be managed on a going-forward basis. So not unique, some combination, and maintaining, again, a robust community voice in this work is going to be important for the city's overall success. At the end of the day, you're going to need to rely on the citizens for any significant revenue increases, and their trust and understanding of these issues is going to be essential in that. This is, the policy work of the council, as I have said in my workshops with the Association of Cities over the years, is the hard part. And that's kind of where we are at this point, making those tough decisions. So with that, we'd be glad to answer any questions. Here's the resources we've provided to the committee on a going-forward basis.
Any questions by counsel? Any comments by counsel?
I have a quick question.
Go ahead.
You mentioned a sales tax.
Yes, sir.
Is our rate right now in Yakima 8.3?
Is the rate 8.?
8.3%, right?
Yes.
And then, what are comparable cities, their sales tax?
There are sales tax cities, there are cities with sales taxes above 10%. On the east side, I think you're probably not unlike, I don't know, Gary, are you familiar with the tri-cities?
Not, maybe not enough, I think they're 8.9.
Yeah, so I think you're probably in the middle there somewhere. There are obviously some with lower, you know, there's where you get away from special purpose districts and things of that sort. Transit, for instance, has a sales tax. So there are some that don't have some of those elements, but I think with, again, a very full-service city like Yakima is, I think you probably find yourself, if not at the midpoint, probably somewhere below it.
Okay. And if we did a 1/10th, how much roughly would that potentially generate?
So our back-of-the-envelope thinking on that is about 2.7 million at this point.
Also, I want to make sure we're clear, the 8.3 is the rate today, but the 2/10ths of a cent for the radio system just passed. So that, when it comes on, will bump that up by 2/10ths to 8.5.
And would we see any of that, or would that go straight to the county?
Straight to the county. The benefit will be where we have a failing radio system, and we were trying to set a little bit of money aside, that may free up that, but it's negligible overall.
Okay. And then if we, I know you mentioned it yesterday, if we explored that option, how quickly, just to impact 2026, what would the timeframe look like?
Yeah, I actually looked up the R C W this morning. So from the time that the election or the council approval, whichever way you went with a sales tax, it takes 75 days that you have to give 75 days' notice to Department of Revenue. And then on top of that, it has to start at the beginning of a quarter. So ultimately, there wouldn't be a way to start at July 1st because D O R needs that 75 days. So the earliest it could start would be like October 1st, and it just depends on when you actually notify D O R. The other side of it is also what's, when the sales tax goes into effect in October, let's just say, for example, October 1st, the businesses collect that money in October, they send it to the state in November, your first allotment of that money would actually be December. So there's a time lag there of a couple of months.
And the other questions by counsel?
To answer your question, Reidy, Kennewick is 8.8, Pasco is 8.9, and Richland's 8.7.
All right. For Mike, what did the, do you have any details why the committee wants to prolong or meet more? Are they coming up with solutions, or are they just trying to understand more of kind of the background of the city finances?
I think the committee is ready to speak to you on some of their thinking themselves, and that might be the best way to, you know, hear directly from them.
Okay.
All right.
One of the things I'm always wrestling with is that, especially the fact that our sales tax revenue is down below what it was the last two years. To me, that's an indicator of stress on the individuals. And I see the need to keep our government up and running, but at the same time, the government exists to serve the people, and when they're in stress, it's not a good idea to increase the stress. And, you know, you look at 100,000 people, they say, well, that's only, you know, $100 per person, we cover it. But, you know, it's, there's a lot of people in Yakima who are financially stressed to the extreme. From what I understand, right now, about a quarter of the people in Yakima spend at least 50% of their income on housing, which is really high. And, you know, to me, at a long-term basis, I think there needs to be a way that we can talk to the state or deal with the state and make this problem known to them, that Olympia mandates things for the entire state, but they don't reimburse the states to that level. We're expected to obey the same laws as a society of the same size over on the west side that might have three times the money to address it. And so that creates some real challenges that we need to, I think we've got to find some new solutions to deal with it. We can't just, oh, let's just raise taxes and call it good.
So the difficult balancing act between finding the resources and deciding which services are essential for your community is the tough policy work I was talking about, that you're exactly right. In my work with cities on this topic, one of the first solutions that comes up is to go to Olympia, and I've never seen that as a viable, you know, helpful alternative. So I was pleasantly surprised they provided an option for councils. Again, it's an increase in taxes, to your point, but that's as helpful as they've been in many years, in my experience. They're usually adding obligations and not adding, helping with solutions.
I'm assuming, too, that, Craig, you're going to come back with Vicky at another time with some options of what these, you know, a myriad of options that we need to start looking at to take, correct?
Yes, we will be coming back in future weeks. I expect the Budget Committee to come back with recommendations as well. And we're going, tonight is a little bit more about what the community had to say and what the committee had to say. I'll go through the community part. I think Mike can talk about and answer questions about the committee, and these are great questions for him because he's an expert on these issues, too. So if you have specific questions about revenue options, he knows them, but I know Craig is, also knows them, too. So he also has his phone number, in case he has a question.
It's interesting how some of these things interact with each other. I, you know, I think, oh, we spend an awful lot of money on policing, and then I think as a landlord and a property owner in Yakima, the thousands and thousands of dollars that it costs from the homeless people being out. So I look at the policing right now and say, it is so awesome what they have done in the last month to decrease the number of homeless people on the streets. And you don't really see that, you know, in a dollar and cents means, but at the same time, it really does decrease the cost of doing business for property owners because the damage that these homeless people cause all the time is decreasing. So you see the trade-off, you know? I mean, I think the police are very expensive, but at the same time, the fact that they've cleaned up the homeless on Natchez Avenue in the last month is awesome, and I want to commend them for it.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments by counsel?
Other than, you know, I'm thankful for the committee and, you know, you guys putting in the hard hours and time that is spent on that. It's not the most fun thing to do, is look at a budget. So thank you.
Well, we're going to move on to the committee, but before we do, Mr. Bailey, I just want to thank you personally for the time you spent with the city, acting as a consultant for us and for the great work you've done in working with the Budgeting Committee and working with the council, going through the priority-based budgeting. It's been, it's been very helpful to us, your expertise, and we appreciate it.
Thank you, it's my pleasure.
And we're going to miss you, Mike.
I'll come back and visit my brother.
Okay, there you go.
Hop in, say hello.
I will do.
So next, in this particular part, we're going to ask Gina Hernandez to come forward and give us her prior from the committee.
Are you okay up here, or do you need to? Hi.
Hi.
I am Gina Hernandez, resident of the City of Yakima. Good evening, counsel, good evening, staff. As part of the Budget Advisory Committee, I want to let you know that we, the committee, have had 12 meetings in as many weeks. Mike Bailey, as finance consultant, provided a skilled overview that was so valuable that I made the suggestion the info would make an excellent course of classes for incoming council members. Staff provided information and perspectives with all of the department heads making themselves available to us. The city manager was at every meeting we had. As a committee, we agree upon the need for a sustainable budget. We continue exploring a mix of revenue and cost-cutting options, a hybrid of possibilities. We just haven't had the time really to arrive at anything just yet. We need more time to work together. We need to spend more time with your new finance director. We want to be able to present recommendations with a comprehensive rationale and feel we are well on our way. We are committed to continue to work on this matter, but expecting to be back in front of you with the direction in about a month. There has been a lot of additional time, energy, and effort invested in this budget. We're grateful for the opportunity and working well together. That's their committee. I ran the wording by best I could, the committee, and we were agreed upon all of that. I do take a little bit of issue with the fact that most did not take that approach with something Mr. Bailey said, and like you said, two of the seven didn't agree on this or that. We have thrown a lot of ideas, a lot of information out there. We bounced a lot of ideas and brainstorming off of one another. I don't know that we made any decisions, either individually or collectively, that have anything solid yet to bring before council. yet to bring before council. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hernandez. All right. I think the next part is we are going to recognize the committee.
Yeah.
And so.
Yeah.
If you are here as I call your name, please come forward because we have certificates of our appreciation for the work that you have been and are doing.
Have a little surprise for you.
And we have a little gift for you. So the first is Luis Lopez.
And, you know, we like to, you know, just.
Come shake our hands.
Shake your hand.
And your certificates.
Thank you very much.
You are welcome. We appreciate it.
No, absolutely. It's been a pleasure.
The next is Dulce Gutierrez. Is Dulce here this evening?
She's not able to make it.
Okay. Then we will go to Gina Hernandez. Please come forward. Make the round.
Teacher appreciation week.
I'm going to remain standing also. Next is Angie Gerard.
Take a bow. Take a bow.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Matt Duffy. Not here either. Okay. Next is Dirk Brent. Is Dirk not here either? I thought he was already there. No? Okay. Then we have Gunnar Bunn. You may.
Thank you.
Just go to the mic. You're shaking hands.
I did have something to say, and I definitely should have gone right after Gina, so it's slightly awkward. But can I, can I pass something out to you guys?
Depends.
Okay.
I'm a treaty guy, it's a fault.
Is it $9 million?
That's a philanthropy they're talking about.
First of all, thank you guys all for even creating this committee. I personally have met with many staff members, Vicky Baker and Mike, and others. But, I mean, what an opportunity that is to be able to sit with leadership and now be able to stand in front of you all. So I did want to start by just thanking you for, for that. So I promise I haven't gone rogue with my thoughts here that I passed out. It's just going to be the, you know, the first page there, and then the, the last two pages are in ordinance idea that I came up with. Actually, it was kind of discussed in our committee meetings, but, you know, I wanted to elaborate on it. And if this isn't an actual suggestion by the committee, because I don't want to speak for all of them, it's at least an example of something that you could consider in the future when people smarter than myself present them to you guys to cut the $9 million budget. So just keep that in mind. I just want to talk about three things. Three ways I think we could help with the $9 million deficit. The first one is immediate cuts. I never like to make suggestions to people that are vague without actual numbers. I think that suggestions are one thing, but concrete ways to fix things, whether it's, you know, a fence or a $9 million budget shortfall, are things that people need to see. So these are just a few things that came to mind here. The windows of live art, fireworks, flowers and flower baskets, the YCDA funding, selling the Bank of America building. These are low on the survey results, according to my understanding. And I personally think these would be easy to trim from the budget. It's not fun to do these things. No one wants to cut anything. But with $9 million shortfalls, we have to find something. And so the way I see everything, I, I do agree with some of the other speakers here tonight, in the sense of, you know, we don't want to really cut police and fire. I'm the last one that wants to do that. I submitted a budget proposal, proposal of $9 million to cut with that in mind. And it was hard for me to find ways without raising revenue to achieve this objective. So the way I see things in terms of these suggestions are, if we cut the things in, you know, example one here, and we save ourselves $206,000, you could take that money and give it directly to police and fire, to hire new police officers or, you know, firefighters. And this would hopefully help with the overtime issue that I'm sure you guys are aware of, which costs us millions of dollars. So there's one thing there. The second one, and I promise these examples get better as we go along, is a CPI-based automatic fee increase. This isn't going to be for every single fee. On the second page are examples of ways we could increase these fees. But I, I'm a financial advisor, and one thing that I have to take into account, especially for people that are retired, is that we have to raise their amount of money that they have more than inflation every year. Inflation never stops, as we've seen over the last few years. It continues to rise. I think that one example that you guys should really think about doing is automatic increases in the fees throughout the city. Right now, the city makes around $3 million a year in fees. You throw a 3%. I just said 3%. That's the historical average. But let's say it is 3% automatic adjustment each year. That's going to bring $90,000 in the first year. Then it's going to bring $92,000 in the next year. And you go out 10 years, and you found yourself over $1 million worth of revenue. And that's a very simple way to find that money. I think it keeps you competitive. I think it keeps you in alignment with, you know, just economics in general. Inflation's not going to stop, so I think you guys should, at a minimum, consider increases to general fees. So, I mean, some of those would be building and development permits, utility fees, Lions Pool, Harmon Center, business licensing. Again, none of this is fun. I'm the last guy that wants to pay more money for, you know, a discretionary thing that I'm wanting to use that the city offers, but it is an option. The.
Real quick.
Yeah.
Do other cities do this? Is this a common practice?
Yes. It's not, I wouldn't call it common, but yes, I've seen other cities that have automatic escalators in their structure.
Is the percentage 3%?
It's usually connected to some other outside factor, like Consumer Price Index or something of that nature.
Okay. Well, thank you.
I appreciate him throwing me a bone. Give me a chance to collect fight.
I've never heard such a thing.
So page two and three is ordinance. I am not saying that this is legally binding. You would want to run this by your legal department. But it's just a thought. So the final thing that I think really has merit is we have inter-local service contracts. I think this is going to be mainly Vicky that's going to have to focus on this one, but I thought I would present it to you guys. The thing that really stood out to me, and I think the committee, is how much we spend on police and fire. I think it's 82% of the general fund budget. Maybe I'm off by a few percent. A lot of the money that's spent with just police and fire is overtime. I mean, I think in our last Budget Committee meeting, the fire lieutenant was making like $315,000 a year or something like that. And I made a joke, there was one line item that said, I think, canines went out. And I said, even the, even the dogs are making overtime hours. So this isn't good. Which is a joke. It's not them. It's the person in charge of the dog. So we need to figure out a way to tackle the overtime issue. So how do you do that? You would either increase staff, obviously, or we lower the amount of work that these staff members have to do. And I would think that every single department, actually, every department I met with, that we met with, said that they are understaffed and have way too much work. So there really isn't a way to cut the amount of work we have to do, except when you look at some of these inter-local service contracts. We provide many services, like fire, police, and IT services to other cities. So this is Yakima residents that are paying for police and fire, and IT, and all the other departments we have. And then we're, we're helping Union Gap and other places. And they are paying us money to do these services, but they're not paying us a premium to do the services. And I don't really know the inner workings of, you know, how frequently they're paying us, or when was the last time these contracts were negotiated. But I have done some digging, and I think a 10 to 15% increase in premium to these other cities has been done before. I think it's a good idea to look into. I think it actually would raise millions of dollars over time that I personally would say should go directly to police and fire. And then with the money that you're giving that these departments, you just hire more staff members, and hopefully that will also help with the overtime. So not only are we collecting more revenue, we're giving more resources to these departments that are overworked, and it, in effect, will lower the overtime hours over time. Is this making sense?
It does. It's almost like an impact fee. What kind of an impact in the city for the taxpayers in the city to have those services paid for just kind of across the board. And they're getting a lot of convenience and probably savings in their own budget by having us do that. So I think it's worth consideration. Thank you for that.
Yeah. And so I'll just finish because I don't like standing up here.
That's scary.
I, Mike Bailey has been exceptional. Vicky Baker has been exceptional. Many other staff members have been great. You guys have really good leadership in front of you. I would lean on what they have to say, you know, almost every time. I, I just wanted to say that. I think you guys are great, too. It is a very tough situation. I do think cuts are needed. Gina mentioned, and she was speaking for the committee, that we do need to make a hybrid approach. I think that probably means some cuts, which are no fun, and revenue increases. Mike mentioned the possible, you know, 0.1% sales tax increase. So again, thank you all. That's, that's all I have to say.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right.
All right.
There we go. Okay, we are now moving down to item B, which, 9B, which is the Budget Survey and Sales Center. City Manager Vicky Baker is going to share those with us.
Great. Thank you. I've got a presentation to. Yes. Thank you very much. So I think I'm ready to go. Okay. First, I would like to share some overall information about the engagement that we performed here over the last couple of months, because it's been quite a bit. So here's the list. City of Yakima, we did in-person presentations and interviews in media and on social media and on our own TV channel. We did a Yakima City Council presentation for all of you. I did a downtown Rotary, Southwest Rotary, Sunrise Rotary, Downtown Kiwanis, Chamber of Commerce, Downtown Association of Yakima. I spoke with the retired firefighters. I mentioned the Yakima Agenda Program. I went on KIT, and I think some of you may have done that as well. Randy did an interview with The Herald. He did KIMA, maybe more. Did The Business Times. We had social media, website, and then everywhere I went, I talked to everybody about this. It's been the topic for me. So the other thing is we retained YVCOG to assist. And so I have their list of things that they did as well. So these are the pop-ups that occurred, starting April 4th at Mercado de Yakima, and then April 8th, OIC's Food Bank Distribution. These are in districts. So we had District 1 with the Mercado, District 5 is OIC's Food Bank. OIC's Henry Bochamp Community Center Senior Bingo Event was a whole bunch of different districts. Ray's Market, Third, District 4. We had Arborfest with all the districts on April 12th. OIC, Henry Bochamp, again, the Senior Bingo Event, also more feedback there for all districts. They went to Ray's Market, 72nd, District 7. Rose Hours, 72nd, District 6. Rotary Club Food Distribution in District 2 on April 25th. Safe Yakima Valley Shred and Med Event. Central Washington Spanning Chamber of Commerce Meeting, and St. Joe's Catholic Church, where they shared with staff and the congregation. That's a lot. So that's just the in-person stuff and kind of out in the community. But we also launched our survey, and this, this is also about that. In all of those discussions, we were encouraging people to take the survey. So we had 2,065 people complete the survey. 3,400 people actually responded to at least one question and didn't hit that green button at the end. So we don't know where they dropped off, but 3,400 people were engaged in some way. I mentioned YVCOG, and I will talk about our town halls. So, and Gary is going to help me because he attended those as well. So we had YVCOG at the town halls to help people in bilingual do the survey if they needed help. I started, partnered with Deputy Mayor Brown and Councilmember Berg at the Harmon Center. That was our first one. We had a packed room. I'd say a couple hundred people there. I asked that group, why were you there? And we, all the hands went up. They were in, there in support of the Harmon Center. They really care about the Harmon Center. We heard that repeatedly. But when I asked them, when their hands were up, do you care about public safety more? And they said, oh, no, they don't. So that was interesting. Also, the concerns from the community in that town hall, we heard passionate pleas over and over and over that night to save the Harmon Center. And they asked about revenue options to save it, including taxes, raising fees for classes and services at the center. So that was my feedback, and I'm going to kick it to Gary. And then I would love to hear from you, because the council members were there, two of you. So Gary, what did you?
Yeah, so.
I have one question for.
Oh, yes.
When you were talking about all hands up because they're all there for the Harmon Center.
Yes.
You asked them, do you care about the Harmon Center more, or do you care about public safety?
Do I, I said, do you care about the Harmon Center more than public safety? And then the hands went down. Yeah. They care about it a lot, but not more than public safety.
Yeah. So a couple things, yeah, it was the largest crowd we had. It was definitely around Harmon Center support. You know, there was, I think, questions that would get to the transparency of what we do. So we got questions on, well, how much revenue does the Harmon Center bring in versus how much are the expenses? And is there a fund out there that we're not aware of? And we got some ideas, like a number of county residents were there who said, well, maybe you should partner with the county because we like using the Harmon Center, too. And I was like, that's a great idea. I don't know how the county would feel about that. But, but one, I think, an interesting thing was the discussion around raising program fees, which, you know, we had a little conversation here just, and there was, in general, support of that. There was also concern that there may be fixed-income individuals there who would have a tougher time with that. But, but in general, it seemed a sense of, hey, we understand, we're going to, we're going to need to raise some fees. Yeah. Those are the ones that I kind of pulled out.
Do you have anything to add?
The Harmon Center was the number one topic at that town hall. Wanted to keep it. And so I told my other council mates, that was a very strongly worded meeting about keeping the Harmon Center and its intactfulness. And, and I will relay that they said they would be here if that ever comes back up for a discussion. So I think that was one aspect. But it was a great conversation. I, I think being able to unpack a lot of different things. Well, why does this cost that? And this magical fund that is not there on certain things that they thought might have been there for actually funding the Harmon Center. But, yeah, I mean, it was, it was a great night. It was long. It was close to two and a half, three hours long. So.
Always fun. No, I gave those people my word that we would keep the Harmon Center.
I did, too.
So that's what I'm going to do. Going off of what Gary just said, there was one story, I think a lady said, she's been going there for 25 years, something like that. She said, when I started, the fee was $10 a month. And then she's like, guess how much I paid last month for my dues? $10 a month. So what the citizens brought up, potentially raising fees might be a good idea. They're very invested in it, and they were the ones suggesting it. So we, I guess, could explore that option. But I do know we need to keep the Harmon Center, or else.
Good luck.
We're all, you go tell them that.
I've had people ask me that, too. And I said, oh, no, it's not going anywhere.
Yeah. So, just to reiterate.
And if I may, with respect to fees, I mean, that's a classic council policy topic, right, to say, well, what is our fee philosophy? And how do we know to what degree we're subsidizing something? So as you have that fee discussion, know what the full costs of a various, you know, a certain program might be, and then determine, well, how, how much do we want to subsidize this?
Scare us off.
You know? And, and of course, you take a look at the history that says, well, to, you know, that's what it really costs, and $10 is, you know, we're subsidizing it this much.
Right.
But that's, that's the kind of council conversation that I think Gunnar was talking about in terms of informing, so what should our philosophy be around these fees? about in terms of informing, so what should our philosophy be around these fees? And then for those that can't pay, find ways to help identify who those people are and accommodate them, rather than undermining your fee policy and philosophy by saying, well, there's some people who can't pay. I mean, so sort those issues out.
And maybe we can look at maybe people in the community who would like to do scholarship programs for people to join.
That'd be a great opportunity.
I think it'd start at the Harmon Center with that because there's a wide disparity of income in the Harmon Center. So those that like their friends would maybe be willing to sponsor some of them. Now, seriously, we need to look at everything. But the other thing is we look at, for example, the golf course. Thank you. It's called...
Fisher?
Fisher, thank you very much. So Fisher is a, is a program that supports itself, right? And they do that through fees. And so we need to take a realistic look at fees of all the programs.
So, I'm sorry, Councilmember Glenn, if what we're on, Fisher Golf Course, as the outside observer who says things that some others may not agree with, I think you want to look at that really hard. I mean, right now, it's buried in the general fund. While you have too many funds and the funding is too complicated, Fisher is one that should be separate in an enterprise fund where you're accounting for all the costs they're associating with it. And then you'll find out if in fact you're not subsidizing.
Yeah. I was going to say, you know, one of the aspects that we asked as a council was obviously the community feedback because, you know, as we're trying to figure out the priorities in different aspects, what was, what's fantastic about all of this when we have a fee discussion is being able to know what folks are actually thinking in regards to the fees. So I, you know, I'm encouraged by hearing all of the data that comes back. Yeah.
So am I.
One of the things that I think the Harmon Center really brings out is that there's more to a community than dollars and cents. And when we can develop relationships with the citizens in the community as a government, we both benefit. And I think over the years, there's been a lot of things happen that make people think that the government is looking out for itself and people exist just to help government. But the reality is, we, we're people and we're social. And we need to keep that in mind as we plan our activities going forward that are, we're not just in the business of spending dollars to support, provide city services. We're in the business of making Yakima a community where people want to live.
The quality of life issue is very significant. I think we would all recognize that. And we do have opportunity. We have people in our community who I know, out of the generosity of their own heart and the blessings they have, want to help others participate in a way that they can. And one of the perfect examples we had was, I think last summer, we had a community member come forward with a $5,000 check to cover, to cover our children's day camp this summer. There are people who have a heart for what really needs to happen and are willing to do that. And we need to seek that out. So...
Okay. I will go to the next town hall. We had with Councilmember Roy and Councilmember Herrera at the Convention Center. It was a little smaller crowd, but it was a younger crowd. And what we saw there were concerns about removing youth programs. We heard that one over and over, worrying that closing parks, pools, and community centers give kids less things to do, and that can cause more problems in the community. There was a lot of discussion about prevention of crime and gang activity and how all of those programs really help with that. So I'd say prevention was a pretty good, solid theme in that town hall. You have any thoughts, Gary?
Yeah, no, I think you took most of mine. But it was, it was a younger group. The youth programs did come up. But, but we also heard, I mean, there was, certainly Harmon Center group was very focused on the Harmon Center, but was also looking at other things. But this one, I mean, they talked about roads. They talked about public safety. They talked about parks. So, so there was, you know, there was a broader discussion as well than what we heard at the Harmon Center. But, but there was a focus on the importance of these youth programs. And, and similar to what we heard about the Harmon Center of the ability for youth to connect. I remember one young woman, I believe, who was telling her story of actually how those programs helped her and helped her take a different path in life and that she wasn't on a good path, but...
Yep. So I don't know if you have anything to add, Councilmember Herrera?
Yeah, just a couple of words. Like others said, there's a certain advocacy for the youth, right? We want to be proactive, engage them in positive activities as well too. So I know there's a lot of community members that gone through the programs that are no longer here that look back and say, hey, where, what did that happen? And I know another thing was investing or coming back to downtown, the Hot Shots and other activities. We used to have a Single Day Mile Parade or any type of parades here or more festivals. And I know this past weekend was Taco Fest at the Food Pavilion, which was great. So I just, you know, bringing back, bringing things back to the community and have things for families to do because it was a family event. So specifically on the youth.
Councilman Roy, do you have any comments you'd like to share?
Yeah, you know, it's not much after Vicky, Gary, and Danny, they're pretty much nailed everything. So not much more to add, but it just, it's just awesome to see the people that, that do care come out. And, you know, Yakima is a social town, which is good to see, and those programs are so important. And the passion for those and not, you know, do away with anything. I mean, the survey was really, really a lot of people were just kind of upset. So a lot of stuff that was on it, but you know what? It's good that people came out and got involved and voiced their concerns. But other than that, you guys had said anything else what happened at the meeting. So I'm just really excited that this has all been happening and that people are speaking out. That's it.
Thank you.
Okay. And the final town hall was at Davis High School for Mayor Byers, Councilmember DCO, and Councilmember Glenn. We had a small group there as well, but it was long. It was again, I would say, almost three hours. The emerging themes there were completely different again. This time, we heard a lot of excitement about economic development and growing our way out of the situation that we find ourselves in. And lots of questions about when can we get an In-N-Out Burger and a Chick-fil-A? It was, it was lots of fun and a very engaging...
I asked them all of them.
No pressure, Gary. But those were definitely questions. And some members suggested revenue options instead of cutting services because they just didn't want to see the cuts. So there were a lot of folks who were concerned about that too.
Yeah, so I think that was probably the most diverse group we had. So I mean, age, age-wise, kind of a mix of different folks. They focused a little bit on the essential. We also heard maintain what you have before expanding. So there were some conversations around that. I would say, and it did, it was a great one for me because they want to talk economic development. I like talking about that. But this group actually, so all the groups were appreciative after the meeting, but this group actually was appreciative while we were having the conversation. They're like, this is great. We appreciate the transparency. We encourage, you know, transparency and regular communication so that we, we as citizens understand what's going on. And so, and that, that's not only the theme here, but, but they did mention it before versus coming up to us afterwards and saying, hey, great job. So...
Councilman DCO?
I don't think I have anything to add to that.
Okay.
Councilman Glenn?
One of the things that has been weighing on my mind a lot is that there are some things that I think as a city, we need to find ways, as a government really, to do better. I look at the cost of our justice system and, you know, processing, I was talking with one of the policemen and he said that it costs over $10,000 to resolve an issue with a dog. And I think that our, we've got trials that are costing tens and hundreds of thousands of dollars. I mean, it's huge amounts of money. And our justice, our, our government can't support that. We can't provide that. We've got to find better ways to encourage our citizens to be law-abiding. And, you know, you can't just pass more laws and, and put in more courts and make it happen. We, we have to have a change of attitude among the people to make some of this stuff happen.
How did, how did your town hall go, Greg?
That's, yeah, that's...
That was the question. That was the question, yeah.
I didn't get a chance to say anything because everybody was talking. I said, all right, I'm going to listen tonight. And it was like she said, there were a lot of different opinions and a lot of different ideas expressed. And, you know, there's as many, you know, there's 100,000 people in Yakima. And I think that's about how many opinions there are about how we fix this problem. So we got to narrow it down a little bit.
I thought you were going to say you had 100,000 people there. Wow.
The key is not that big.
I'd like to say that one of the things, and I know council sometimes maybe get a little annoyed with me, but I think I have the best district in the city. And because it is really, you know, it's central Yakima and it's, it's probably one of the most diverse districts in the city in terms of a lot of things. So I felt like the representation, even though it wasn't a great group, like 100, 200 people, the representation of the people in my district...
They were smart.
The representation of the people in my district was good in terms of different perspectives and ideas and diversity in the group in terms of, you know, ethnicity or socioeconomic opportunity. So we heard a lot of really good things. I was happy with that. I also feel like the group didn't really appreciate, Gary, like you said, that they appreciated the opportunity to be heard and to come and to hear what we had to say. And I always like hearing that because I like us to be as transparent and helpful with, you know, our city as we can. And I think everything we have done in this whole process, from starting with priority-based budgeting forward, has been an opportunity for our community to, you know, to be transparent with our community and really listen to their voices. So I appreciated the opportunity that night. There was a lot of great discussion about potential economic development, including everybody was really, yes, great job on the airport, keep moving forward. They all wanted to see that continue for, you know, business at the airport will create businesses around the city. So that was really a key point. I would vote for, as much as I love Chick-fil-A, I would vote for...
I'll take whatever we can get.
That's right.
Either one.
In-N-Out Burger is one of my favorites. We used to go in and to California visiting families just so we could go to In-N-Out Burger. My husband has a closet full of t-shirts to show that.
I thought you were going to say burgers.
Burgers, In-N-Out Burger.
I would disagree with you on the district, being that District 6 is pretty representative in the room tonight. So...
Maybe, but they weren't at my council. They weren't at my, okay, there you go. I'm just always going to brag on my district because I love it. I love living there. I love the people there. I love serving the city as a whole, but it's my district. So...
I've lived in my district for 65 years.
Wow.
Do you feel like your district was represented in there?
Was it?
Do you feel like that you're part of the, the group was, your district as well?
Yeah.
I had one couple. And did you feel that way? Never mind. I do, I had one couple. And that's why I thought it was just really different opinions, different ideas. Finally got down to the question, will you as council members, are you willing to make the hard decisions when the time comes? And I thought that was an insightful question for them to ask. I appreciated it.
I think they were really intelligent.
Yeah, I think so too. Okay, that's...
All of them were. Very intelligent. All of the district leaders.
Moving on.
So I'll just finish up on the town halls by, in all of the outreach efforts, by just saying that I heard over and over individually how much they appreciated the transparency and the trust that, that we are going to the community and just telling them the truth. This is our situation. And I think they really appreciated that honesty in, in our approach. So, and I heard that very often. So I'm going to go back to my presentation now. Okay, here we go. And I'm going to start the survey. So this is the actual results, the finalized results of the survey. Question one, I'm just going to read them, although you can see them. Here are the final results, percentages rounded. What is your top priority for the City of Yakima's budget? Police, 40%. Street maintenance and infrastructure, 26%. Parks, pools, community centers, and sports programs, 25%. And fire, 9%.
Interesting.
Question two, would you support increasing property taxes to specifically pay for police, fire, and court services? Yes, 40%. No, 33%. I need more information before deciding, 27%.
A third of them, almost.
So the budget reduction exercise, we had 2,065 people complete that section. This is actual voting on the programs. As you know, they, they selected programs or tried to select programs to add up to $9 million. These are the actual numbers and percentages for the programs. So number one, eliminating lobbying and council travel, 59%.
Done.
1,372 votes. I'm not going to read every vote, but just so you see, that's what it is, 1,372. Eliminate funding for fireworks, 56%. Reduce windows of live funding, 51%.
Done.
Eliminate flowers downtown, 45%.
Oh.
Streamline civil service, 41%. Eliminate trolley maintenance, 41%. Eliminate funding for adult sports programs, 40%. Eliminate funding for traffic calming, 38%. Close Washington Fruit Community Center, 38%. Eliminate alley maintenance, 35%. Reduce funding to YCDA, 34%.
Just give the alleys back.
Eliminate crime-free rental housing, 33%. Eliminate economic development staff, 33%. Reduce funding for community recreation, 31%. Reduce Tahoma Cemetery watering, 28%. Eliminate legal department front desk staff, 27%. Reduce funding for the YPD Traffic Unit, 27%. Eliminate Clean City Program, 26%. Eliminate code enforcement officers, 26%. Close Lions Pool, 26%. Eliminate Animal Control and Parking Enforcement, 25%.
Yeah, I'm surprised that's not higher.
I got a question real quick.
Yes.
Did we turn the water on for the cemetery for Mother's Day?
This year, we budgeted for that.
Okay.
Yes.
I know there was an issue a couple of years ago.
Yes.
For Memorial Day and Mother's Day.
For 20, this is, these are 26. 25, everything is budgeted.
We're good this year.
Next year, though.
Yeah. Eliminate funding for sidewalk improvements, 24%. Reduce YPD and Yakima Fire Department training budgets, 23%. Eliminate graffiti removal program, 22%. Reduce parks maintenance funding, 21%. Eliminate the YPD crime analysis, 21%. Eliminate street maintenance funding, 21%. Close fire station 92, 20%. I don't support any of these cuts, 20%.
No.
And then reduce funding for snow and ice control, 19%. Close Harmon Senior Center, 18%. Eliminate youth sports programs, 17%. Close Franklin Pool, 16%. Eliminate Yakima Police Department Property Crimes Unit, 16%. Eliminate Yakima Police Department's Gang Unit, 16%. And eliminate YPD Narcotics Unit, 16%.
Those were the lowest.
The final question before the demographic question. If property taxes were raised by about $20 a month for the average homeowner, public safety services would be fully funded. Knowing that, how do you feel about increasing taxes to support police, fire, and court services? I support increasing taxes to pay for police, fire, and court services, 57%. I don't support increasing taxes to pay for police, fire, and court services, 43%. These are the optional questions. You didn't have to enter these, but we did get quite a few responses. It shows you the districts. So there's a pretty good spread of the different districts and the numbers of responses. District 1 had 6%, District 2, 5%, District 3, 18%, District 4, 7%, District 5, 17%, District 6, 21%, and District 7, 19%. There are, I do not live in one of the council districts, 4%, and I am not a Yakima resident, 2%.
So Mayor, District 6 had the most.
And that is it. Questions?
That's because you got 200.
I'd just like to make a comment. We talk about property taxes and it's pretty popular to say, oh, I don't own property, so I don't pay property taxes. The reality of the matter is, you know, as a landlord, I pay property taxes on the property that I live in. But on every other property, the tenants are the ones that pay the taxes. So everybody pays property taxes whether they own or whether they rent.
That's right.
Yes.
Landlords typically would pass that on in rent. Yes.
There's a few things that I think are interesting in here. One, everyone wants the fireworks gone. So that's great.
From the King and fireworks debate?
No, we don't talk about that.
You didn't talk about parking?
Nope. Well, that one was the interesting one. Eliminate, what was it? It was parking enforcement. I was like, really? They didn't want to eliminate it? All right.
Well, we don't need to have paid fireworks because people are lighting them off anyway all through the town.
That's true.
Go to Moxie and you get a roll together.
Right.
The flowers downtown. A lot of the ones that are like easy to... The flowers downtown, a lot of the ones that are like easy to cut up at the top, well, not easy to cut, but like, they're probably not very...
They don't really do anything.
Equate to a lot of money.
No.
It's low-hanging fruit.
Yeah. Not a lot of money.
Low-hanging flower bills.
Yeah, the big, the big dollar amounts are at the very, very bottom of the list.
How would you actually reduce funding to YCDA?
That's a great question. We would ask, I don't know.
So I would guess we have a contract with YCDA, and so we would just eliminate that contract. Or we look at, you know, one of the things I'm working on just regarding economic development funding in general is, is there opportunities to get that out of the general fund? Can we find some alternative funding sources for, just economic development in general? Still, whether YCDA is funded or we provide partial funding or not, certainly that would come up, but just trying to identify non-general fund sources for economic development, which I had in my previous lives, both at the City of Richland and Benton County, economic development was non-general funds. There was other revenue sources for that.
I think sometimes we can be penny wise and pound foolish. It's easy to say, let's not spend money on lobbyists. And I know we got rid of our grant writers a few years ago, but as I've talked with other communities, and sometimes the grant writers and the lobbyists are responsible for bringing huge amounts of money into the city, way, way, way above what it costs to have those people. So, you know, it's not as simple as it looks sometimes.
Certainly, it's the federal, got back to congressionally-directed spending, AKA earmarks. I know we don't call them that anymore, but that lobbyist, and there has been a lot of significant dollars brought into the city.
Millions of dollars.
Yes, yeah, for transportation, including the airport.
I can't go past this without giving a shout out to Bill Presson, who's brought in millions and millions of dollars of revenue to do projects in the City of Yakima. He's been awesome at that job.
Is Bill behind me?
Yes, he is. He's staring at you right now.
All right, okay. I don't want to say anything good about him while he's looking at me, so, no. It is, he has, he works tirelessly at that, and it's part of an effort with both the lobbyists and with Bill's work, setting up the project in the right way so folks want to fund it, and then, you know, the lobbyists actually getting, helping get the funds.
Also, I thought is interesting is the streamlining civil service. I'm surprised that's in the top five.
I think it's because people don't know what that is.
Right.
I'm being honest about that.
And I think that's an interesting one as well. It kind of prompted me to, on a comment that I kind of left off my last slide there that I've shared again with Vicky and others in the leadership team, there's a lot of what I'll call bureaucracy, otherwise red tape, here in the city. And so, one thing that's difficult to, to have a process to address is the need to continually find efficiencies. And so oftentimes here, department heads say, well, you know, I'm at the same staffing level I was X years ago and whatever else. And my answer is, well, maybe your scope of work has gotten bigger, the number of people you're serving is bigger, whatnot, but you should have been getting more efficient all the time as well. Productivity improvements are important and necessary. And so this notion of finding efficiencies is something that needs to continually be worked. It's tough for councils. So as I work with councils, there's one of the questions often comes up, is, well, how do we know that our staff is doing the work that they're doing as efficiently as they can? How do we compare with other cities? Lots of different things. And that's where some of the metrics that come out of the operationalizing or strategic plan will help you with a little bit of that. But at the end of the day, as I said, one of the observations I would have to share with you that I've shared with others already, is that there's a lot of opportunity to look for those efficiencies. And for instance, you don't have to have civil service necessarily to hire based on merit. Social Security, civil service is a very bureaucratic approach, and it's expensive as a result and time-consuming, and yet you can still hire based on merit. No, should you have it or not have it? That's not my place to say. That's your place to say. That's, again, another policy conversation, but I know you're looking at your charter. And so that's a great example of the kinds of bureaucracy that have been accumulated over the years and kind of layered on top. Others are some of the, you know, the fund structure I mentioned before. That's a result of, well, why don't, you know, this happened, so let's do this, and that happened, so let's do that. And pretty soon, you've kind of built this thing, you've got to continue to serve, and it gets more expensive as you go along.
Yeah. I don't think anyone at home watching would mind us streamlining and streamlining and streamlining.
Mike gave me a stack of books that are on my desk and on my bedside about this topic that I am reading.
She's actually reading them. I thought she'd be mad at me about it, but in fact, she's quoting them back to me, so that's great.
He doesn't need sleeping pills.
It's riveting.
Any other comments by council? If not, we'll move to the next item on the agenda, which is our city manager update. And do you believe that Mr. Carr has something?
I do. I want to take a moment as well to thank Mike Bailey for not just helping us through the Budget Committee and not just helping us through the last, you know, recommendations and what we're working on right now, but he actually did more than that. He was our interim finance director, and he's been on an airplane quite a bit. He brought in at a time when we really needed some expertise, a lot of that, and I really appreciate him, and thank you, Mike. I really appreciate it.
My pleasure. I will say, by the way, the Yakima Airport experience is one of the best. And I've shared this with Rob. Have been at a lot of different airports, and it's a pleasure to experience the Yakima Airport. And so, and I was telling folks earlier, I'm always finding that more people are trying to get seats to get on planes to come to Yakima than they seem to be trying to find seats to get on planes to get out of Yakima. So I think it's a great sign. It's been my pleasure. Thank you.
We thank you for increasing the passenger load for us.
Yeah, I've done my part.
Our airport takes about two seconds to get through it.
Yes, it does.
Yes, it's excellent.
And actually friendly. I mean, what's up with that?
It's wonderful. I have one other thing, which is, I understand I may have a opportunity for someone else to attend the AWC conference in June, June 24th to 27th. Right now, we have Councilmember DCO and Councilmember Glenn going, and Councilmember...
I can't go.
You can't go? Okay. So we have one seat available for that, and I'm throwing it out to the group to see if anybody wants to go.
A day's worth again, so everyone knows.
It is June 24th to 27th.
I thought about going because I've been probably more involved with AWC than any other person on council right now, and it's great organization and what they do. But I've been to a lot of conferences, and I also have Pittman softball players coming in this summer, and that's going to greatly interfere with my evening schedule, so I'm wavering on making a commitment to go. Mr. Herrera, would you like to go?
I think I might on that weekend. Vacations, yes. Got to take some. I'm not.
I got two kids on summer break, so.
They were sitting.
Put them in the hotel.
I'll have so much fun listening to that stuff.
So I don't have any takers?
Not at this point. But council, please get back to...
How about Leo?
Oh, I'm sorry, Leo! Hi, Leo, I forgot you were there.
I'm still here. You thought you lost me? No. I did look at my calendar, and I'm trying to get down to Texas that week. It's the only week I have to go see my kids, so. Other than that, I'd love to go, but I, families come in first.
Okay. But keep it in mind for the future, I think it's important for all council to have an experience at the conference.
It's a good conference.
Yep.
And it's not this close either, to us.
And we won't have travel budget next year, so good luck.
This might be your lucky day.
Okay. Anything else?
No, that is it. And if you don't know, if you want to go back and check your calendars, you can always just let me know.
Okay.
Next meeting, or maybe Gary's going to be running the next meeting, you can let him know.
What? You're going to make?
I am actually going on vacation next week for the first time, and I'm very excited about that. So I will not be here next week.
All right. Next on the agenda is other business. Does any councilperson have other business?
I just have one thing. So just give you guys an update from our last city-county meeting. I, there was a lot of questions that I didn't feel like got answered on certain things, so I've requested a lot of data from the county on aspects, and I will share that with those back to the council when I get it, in regards to the rental assistance and some other things. And so hopefully, we'll get that soon, and, yeah.
Wow.
So get that soon, be able to make some decisions.
Thanks for the update.
Yep.
Yep. Any other?
Madam, ma'am.
Yes.
Two things. I forgot to ask, was there anybody that got newly appointed to the committees in the audience to thank them or to congratulate them?
Anyone that was appointed to a committee tonight?
No.
Please stand up.
Oh, there's one.
Come over and identify yourself for us. And tell us what committee you're on.
Good afternoon. So today, I got appointed to the Yakima Parks and Recreation Commission, which is a youth position. I want to thank all of you guys for that, and I'm so excited to represent the community's interests. And I don't have the words right now. I didn't expect this.
Thank you for being willing to share. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
More thing, Madam, ma'am. Thank you. I do have a motion. I move to direct staff to prepare a Juneteenth proclamation to be read and presented at the June 3rd business meeting.
Let's second that.
That is, that's the second time it's come up? What's the next step in the process? We just put it on, agree to bring it to the agenda?
Agenda, yeah.
We'll just take council, just aye vote on that? A or n? All in favor, please say ayes.
Yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Thank you. We'll move forward with that. Thank you, Mr. Herrera.
I got something. Salvation Army has asked me to, they want to have a proclamation to be read and presented at the May 13th study session regarding the anniversary of the National Salvation Army. So I move to direct staff to prepare a National Salvation Army Week proclamation to be read and presented at the May 13th study session.
That's pretty close.
You have to add it to the agenda.
It can be a study session, it just has to be on the agenda.
Yeah. Is that the right motion? That was what was given to you.
Already moved. They're saying that's not appropriate.
Okay, that's already on the May 13th agenda, so I think, although I do not remember for sure, I think you've already voted on that. And so the next step is staff will put it on the agenda and your motion on the night, so May 13th, should either be moving to a...
Accept.
Accept or moving to accept and read. So if you want it read, that should be part of your motion on the 13th.
We already did that.
To be read and presented, that's my motion.
Okay, but that motion should come on the 13th when the proclamation language is in front of you. So it is already on the agenda.
Yeah, because we haven't seen the proclamation yet.
Right.[1723.82]